All right. All right, it's six o'clock. I'd like to call our city council meeting to order for March first, 2022. Let the record show that all city council members are present. We do have councillor Hanson joining via WebEx with us. We also have members of the city staff as well as members of the public. I have asked councillor Arnold if he would lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Everyone, please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
We'll now have a moment of silence. During this time, I would ask that you keep in mind our first responders here in the city, as well as the members of the city councils, they make decisions tonight that impact the residents of our city. I'd also ask that maybe keep in mind the people of the Ukraine and also the other world leaders that their hearts might be softened and maybe we can come to a peaceful resolution. So we'll take a moment of silence now. Thank you. We'll now have a time for public comment. This is an opportunity for people to come to the microphone and address the city council, share any concerns or ideas that they might have. No action will be taken during this time. Please, and when you come up, please state your name and your address, and please try to keep your comments to about three minutes.
Hi, my name is Bryson Eskelson and I live at 628 West 3700 South in Riverdale, Utah. I am 11 years old and I have lived in Riverdale my entire life. My parents are Sean and Blake Eskelson. I have two little brothers named Kyler and Rhett. I attend Riverdale Elementary and I am in fifth grade. I like to go to school and I love playing sports, especially basketball and baseball. The last three to four years, I played baseball in Riverdale City's rec league. My coach is Ryan Jones. He was an amazing coach. At my practices, he had a challenge to see who could hit the farthest or who could throw the best. The winner of the challenges would get a powerade. Everybody on the team had fun doing it. A funny story was when I was in third grade, before I was up to bat in one of my games, Ryan said if I hit a homerun, my dad would buy me a puppy. I was up to bat and I hit the ball hard into right field and got a homerun. At the end of the game, I actually got three homeruns. My coach Ryan was laughing super hard and every time he saw my dad, he asked if he had bought me a puppy yet. Ryan has lived in Riverdale for a long time. He has coached baseball and softball for about 15 to 20 years. He's a good guy and was a very good coach. He made lots of kids in Riverdale better players and made it fun for everyone. He helped everyone focus on what they needed to do better individually and encouraged us to do our best even if we messed up. Last November, Ryan became sick. It's COVID-19 and later passed away. I miss Ryan and wish he was still here to coach me. Ryan Jones was a great man and many people in Riverdale miss him. One day I was talking to my dad and I told him it would be cool if we could name the field after Ryan, where we used to practice and play our games. That is why I'm here today. I want to ask if the East Baseball Field at Golden Spike Park can be named Ryan Jones Field. I'd like to put a sign by the backstop and also another sign below the scoreboard with his name on it. I want to get an approval from the city to do this. And with my friends and family, raise the money to get these signs made and installed. On my next page is an example of one of the signs I want to put up. Thanks for your time in letting me share my idea. And I have a copy for you.
Hi, I'm Dave Leahy and I live at 864 West 4300 South in Riverdale. Mayor, city council. I just come to bring a quick item to your attention so that you're aware of it. I'm kind of representing the veterans advisory group. And what, that's Norm Cyril and Lois Davis and Chuck Kirkfleet and myself. Both of you know those guys. And being on an advisory committee, we just kind of got to get this out here. You know, before we had on military branches on the memorial, we had Army, Navy, Air Force, Marines, and then Coast Guard, and that made five branches on it. Well, we got a new branch in the service now, as most of you know, and that's the Space Force. So with the Space Force coming on, we got to get a new flag on the memorial. So that's going to involve a little bit, and I don't know who's going to do this, if the city's going to be able to do it, or if you have to hire a contractor. But we've got to make a new flag pole, we've got to have brackets, we've got to have the ball on the top, and we've got to buy the flag. And now we come up with an idea, we've got to drill a hole through the center of that Pentagon out there. And where the five flags are, that's a solid concrete, it's about 36 inches of concrete height-wise. And it's pretty large. And what we want to do is, right in the center of that, drill a hole and put the other, the sixth flag right up in that hole, in the middle of the five flags, which would be the Space Force flag. If we drill a hole in that concrete, here's what's going to happen. Number one, we've got to have a drain for it. Because when you drill a hole in the concrete like that and it fills up with water, it could, in the wintertime, and then freeze, it could crack that. It's possible to crack that. So when we put that in there, we need to have a drain. Now, all these five flags out here have drains in them into the bottom. So either we can drill a hole in the bottom of that, or we could put a, what do you call it? A coupler, some kind of, at the base of that, there's a base coupler that has to go in there, that it'll shed the water off. We could caulk it, there's a number of things we could do. If we caulk it though, when you take the flag poles in and out of those holes, you're going to have to recaulk them again if you replace the flag or whatever you do on that. So I don't know, you know, I'm not an engineer, so I don't know what we want to do with that. But we've got to get that new flag up there. So if you guys want to need any help from us, from the committee, let us, I mean, from a group, advisory group, let us know, maybe we can help you. Chuck and I have done some of this before, and so has Norm Cyril. So it's there. But I just wanted to bring that to your attention, let you know that the Space Force flag has to go up.
If I could just, Dave, if you're going to put the flag in the middle, make it about three, four feet higher and have the Marine Corps in the middle.
I'll make sure the Air Force is a little bit above that. All of you saw this, you know, the flag. That's what we've got to have, so I don't know how we want to do it, you know? I'm going to leave it up to the city because it's your memorial, so.
Dave, we appreciate you, all you do on that advisory committee and for keeping us in line and reminding us of these things, so thank you for reaching out.
Yeah, it's kind of, kind of getting up there.
I'm sure we can get that taken care of, so, thanks again.
Thank you.
Yep. Yeah, this is public comment, yep. Better get it now.
I just wanted to introduce myself. My name is Katie Hall and I'm running for state house for District 11. I talked to you earlier, a few weeks ago. And I just wanted to come and introduce myself because your guys' district, or your guys' city is in part of our district. So I've lived in South Ogden for 18 years. My husband's an orthopedic surgeon at Ogden Clinic and I work at Ogden Regional Medical Center as a nurse. I've been a tennis coach at Bonneville High School for 12 years and I have four boys. All my kids are grown now, so I'm looking for a new challenge. So I've decided to throw my hat in for the legislative race for District 11. Hope to be able to work with you guys at some point, but I'm trying to get to all those city council meetings. Everybody has it Tuesday nights, I don't know why, but it's, so we'll see. We'll just get to them as I can. But I thought I'd just leave a little info flyer with you. I don't know if I just give it to somebody here and she can hand them out.
Katie, I had a quick question for you. So this is a change for our city, we've usually been represented by one person.
Oh, yeah.
And they, the redistricting changed that. So are you going to be on the north end of the city, is that our district 11?
No, no, so I'm running against Kelly Miles.
Against Kelly, okay, okay.
Yep.
And is it a primary type thing, or?
Yeah. Yep, so primary will be at the end of June. So, okay, well, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Seeing no other public comment, we'll move on to presentations and reports. Do we have any reports from the city council on their assignments that they're over tonight? Okay. All right, we'll move on to consent items. Consideration to approve the meeting minutes from our February 15th, 2022 council work session and council meeting. Are there any further changes or corrections to those minutes? Seeing none, we'll, we need a motion to approve them. Councillor Arnold?
We have to approve consent items.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. We'll move on to action items. Action item number one is a discussion and consideration regarding fiber optic internet service. Mr. Brooks?
This was requested by councillor Arnold and councillor Merrill. Just, they wanted to put it on for discussion. I didn't know exactly where you wanted to go with it, but I thought our little lead-in gave you a little bit of information, some of the things that we've been looking at, so. I guess we need direction at this point as staff as to what you want us to do, if you want us to continue looking at these things. I mean, I don't know that we would ever really exclude anybody. Somebody asking that previous session, who else is here? I know Utopia has a box right up by Larry H. Miller at the top of the hill there on Riverdale Road. So we're surrounded with them, and I'm assuming some of them will come and some won't. Utopia has a different process, it's not like Connects, so. There are options out there, I don't know if you want us to continue looking, you want us to pursue that one, or what you want us to do at this point. Our biggest concerns that we had previously, Connects kind of answered those and told us the things we were kind of concerned about. I think I had Sean and Cody and all, you know, department heads, this would affect in that meeting. I think we all come out of there feeling pretty good and informed with what they had to say and felt relatively good with them, but we just need direction from you guys, what you want us to do at this point, so.
Steve, I, it's not clear what exactly you're negotiating.
Well, we're really not, other than we give them permission to go and do it. If we did want to go the franchise route, and I don't know how much this is going to benefit us, really, I mean, we talked a little bit about it, there may be a little bit, but I think that's probably why Roy hasn't ever done it, is you put a little bit of work in that and you may not get much back on it, so.
Mentioned that federal law prohibits the franchise tax, right?
On internet, on the fiber stuff, so it's not going to affect them at all. We would look at other companies and other processes, but.
If you're looking for consensus.
They do, they need our right-of-way, so we need to give them that okay from that perspective. I think Sean felt pretty good with what they presented to him the other day, so if you want that, then we'll start looking at it.
That would be an eventual action by the council, or is that something you can grant them?
Well, I think the council would have to okay that ultimately, but, I mean, if that's what you want for the city, we need to open it up and let people in as they approach us. And these guys are there now, they're ready to go, so. I think he estimated within, what, two years is what he told us that day, that they could have most of the city completed by then.
So one other thing to consider is if you're thinking of going this way, we do have quite a few, not a lot, but some new subdivisions and that, that are kind of on the works. We could get all that underground in before we put in infrastructure, which is a huge benefit to us of not going back and tearing up roads and that again. Naturally, unless they have the okay to go ahead and do the whole city, they won't do it in the new subdivisions. But if they have that okay, they're going to use the open trench while it's there and at least put in their underground part, you know, the conduit. And so that's another benefit of getting somebody on board fairly quick with these ones coming up.
I think fiber is inevitable, so sooner we can facilitate it, the better.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, it's not a core service that cities provide, but they do need our ground, our right-of-ways, so. You know, we have the theater, we'll be probably first on the list, that one's coming up really quick. But then we've got the big one, the BACH Homes here south of the city building, that one is going to be huge. So that, for sure, if you're going to do it, we've got to have them going in so we don't have to tear roads up or anything else at that point.
And that would be BACH putting in, I assume conduit, or would we actually?
So no, all they'll do is, usually what they'll do is do like a mega trench, and they'll allow the utilities to go in and do that before they put the overground in. And so it just allows this company the opportunity to come in, lay their conduit in before the curb, the gutter, the sidewalk, all that is in place.
And they would own that conduit or the city?
They would.
Okay.
Yeah, we won't own anything from them, they will just use our right-of-way. We will have no ownership in it, we have no liability with them, we have no costs associated with it. It's all backed on them.
And if another fiber provider like Utopia wanted to go into BACH Homes, they'd have to put their own conduit.
They would have to.
Okay.
Yes.
And just, just so you know, we asked them about like 1700 West on the far side of I-15. They said since they're doing Roy, it'll just be really easy to do that. We were worried about our east bench up along the terrace. They said they could beam some wireless up to those guys.
I mean, wireless, just my opinion, wireless is horrible, I wouldn't encourage that.
Right, that was just kind of a, just to make us feel like, you know, in a case of emergency, they could still do it. But I talked to the mayor up there, I talked to him last night, and he said that they're going to work with Connects too, so they'll be going on the terrace and they'll just do right along the edge.
I mean, if the terrace gets the actual fiber, so would our citizens.
I think South Ogden, they said South Ogden Terrace and us would actually fill them up for the next three years, so they're really looking to just kind of lock down those three cities and.
They were already headed to Uena or South, I think it was Uena.
Yeah.
In a South Weaver, I think it was South Weaver.
They're running their main trunk already past us, which is a huge benefit because it's already.
Where, how past us, where are they getting to?
They're going up the freeway is what I understood, so.
So, I mean.
So they're already, they're already going to be going by, it's just an opportunity for them to grab one more city while they're headed.
Sure. Have they shared with you the sequencing of the cities thus far?
He didn't say specifically, they had two crews, one is their own and the other one they contract, but they planned on expanding that, I think they're six, he said, so.
By this summer is what their plan was.
Well, it could be sooner than the two-year time.
I would think you would start seeing work this summer possibly, yeah. We may, you know, we wouldn't have the whole city done by then, but parts of it would be.
But I think that we welcome this technology with open arms. We become a city that's innovative and forward-thinking, and I think that's good for everybody.
And I think that's what we want, if you guys are agreeable to that, just if we had a motion, just getting support from the council to continue to open our areas to these people, we'll continue to let them come, we'll, you know.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on it?
This is on the, this is on the agenda.
It's an action item.
It was an amended agenda, Alan.
We're just pulling it up out of the, off the website? No, from Riverdale City.
The new one she just sent out had this on as an action.
Put it on our website?
Yeah, the one she emailed us as.
So he usually links the one with the packet and when they amend it, she doesn't always recite the package. Okay, that's fine. So the, the reason I wanted it on the agenda is because this came up out of Facebook, and that's not the way we should be doing business. I mean, that was ridiculous for, and I'm not blaming anybody because it was, it was everybody in Facebook, but it was like, that was how it was chosen to pursue the avenue to even look at it. And it's just like, okay, what does it have to do with the city other than saying, sure, come on in? You know, it's not, it's not the city's project, it's not the city's expense, it's not the, it's not the city's business.
Some are though, Alan, that's why I'm thrilled they don't want anything from us.
No, it's not.
Yeah.
Well, the thing that I see, Alan, and this is, I mean, if there was one that was coming in here that didn't have a lot of those backups and safety measures in place, then we'd be a little bit more concerned about it, might want to vet them a little closer, or at least make sure that that stuff's taken care of. So that's where I kind of see us as the gatekeeper for that, just taking care of our properties, which we always would, so.
When we get on the bandwagon for a particular company, we cross the lines of.
I agree, and it's not like we're supporting them, and he knows that, we explained that really clear. We're not taking sides, and if somebody else comes in, we'll tell them the same thing.
Right, so basically, so I don't know what the motion is, so moved. Is it, if it's, is it Connects, is it fiber, is it?
It's fiber.
To give the city the ability just to do this, because it's.
I would, if you want fiber optic in your right-of-ways, just give us permission and we'll, we'll vet them as they come through, make sure that we're protected.
This motion is for them, because we don't know what the next applicant would look like. But this motion is specific to them without endorsing them, just facilitating that.
See, and I don't want that to be the council's, like, company by company, that's Sean, I think that's Sean. And I think we should give it to the city because that's not what we do. I mean, we're all laypeople who are elected.
My point is, Alan.
If Sean's the, if Sean's the public works guy and he talks to you and says, you know, A comes in, and B comes in, and C comes in, it's like, okay. Sean says no to B, maybe that needs to come to the council because we're rejecting someone because of, you know, because I've heard, like Syracuse, I don't know who's doing Syracuse, but they have destroyed the sprinkling systems and they're, they're going through like a bull in a china shop, so, you know. But that's Sean, Sean's protecting our world in that, in that world, so.
Councillor Yobin? Yeah, I, I don't know what to propose to facilitate this applicant, so if we want to be neutral, I'm all for neutral, but I, but I also think the next applicant is going to require commitments or we make up the difference in their, in their expected subscriber list if they don't meet it, or all of those things that I don't think Sean should decide. So it seems like this applicant is risk-free for us if we're going to facilitate it, if we're going to give them right-of-way, our citizens apparently want this, so my motion is to facilitate this applicant. Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second? We do not have a second, so the motion dies.
So I would make the motion.
Raise your hand. Councillor Merrill?
No, I just, I guess I was under the impression also that it was for fiber going forward. I, I guess I wasn't understanding enough about it that it's for this particular company, because I don't know any other companies at this point, so.
Is there an application from this guy?
No.
I shouldn't say this guy, he came, but this particular company has not petitioned the city for anything.
No.
You reached out to him, he answered the phone, he came and said. So there's really no, I mean, the thing is, should be a consensus on allowing fiber people to come in and you guys say, yes, you can use the right-of-way or.
And that's how I envisioned it, is that we would look at these companies, because I can tell you, my own personal experience is Utopia came into Brigham City a few years ago, this is when they were first starting out, and we got dinged up there. Everybody in there, and everybody in Brigham City got a $2,500 lien on your house. And they did put it in the paper, but most people didn't pay attention to it. And I didn't find out for, you know, probably a year or so later, and I about died when I see that on there. That hit the fan. I would think that that would be something that we would oppose. But in this case, you know, if this company or any other company comes in and says, we're going to, that's our responsibility, that's on our shoulders, and we can, just like we did the other day and we sat down and said, well, how do you handle complaints and what's the delay and all those kind of things? We went through all that stuff with them. That's what, that's what I anticipated we would do. We vet each one of these companies, we're comfortable with them, then we say, go ahead. Any damages you cause, and make sure you give us contact numbers and all that kind of stuff, because we're the ones that are going to get the calls, not them. And so that's kind of the process we followed with him, just kind of, because it was the first one we'd ever been approached by. Even though I initiated that, he did say they were on their way anyway, so he just didn't know who to contact over here, so.
I'm fully for it, but to say, to champion the cause for this guy without him having an application isn't the right way to do it.
And we wouldn't do an application.
Just a consensus for you guys to keep rocking and rolling.
Right, that's all we need, that's all we need, that's fine, I mean, it works either way, so.
We would treat them no different than any other company. If they come in, they would put in an application to work in the park strip, the right-of-way. We will facilitate making sure that they put our infrastructure back, but we won't have control over them on private property. We will just make sure that they follow the permit process, just like if any other company, Fiber Tail or any of them is working here, they put in an application, but that application's just for the right-of-way, it's not like an application to provide service, it's just to work in the right-of-way and put their communication in that right-of-way.
So the discussion, sorry, Braylon, the discussion was, do we have the council's consensus to negotiate with this guy? And that was my motion, yes, you do, keep negotiating. If you see a problem, bring it back to us, if you don't, Sean and yourselves are empowered to continue to negotiate.
We really won't have any negotiation if there, if you, if we don't have any concerns with bringing fiber in, we'll just work through the encroach permit right-of-way situation with them and let them build as they want to build, you know, we won't do a formal contract with them, we don't do that with utilities.
But you would for some of the other fiber companies.
It, yeah, and I, that would be back to you guys' decision. If you're going to bond or something, that's a totally different ballgame, that would take a lot of.
Right, and so I totally agree with councillor Arnold on that, this one, like, it's not a core service, it's not something the city should be involved with. With Utopia and a lot of those, they require bonding, a backstop, so like, if you don't get the right in and out of subscribers, you have to pay for it. So most definitely, if we wanted Utopia here, we would have to come to you guys because it has a budget impact. These guys and what I think we're all saying is, anybody that's just a public utility that we're not involved in, we're going to handle as any other public utility, like a Century Link, a Comcast, we're not involved in their billing or anything like that. And, right, they fill out the public easement application and away they go. We don't negotiate, we don't do anything, we just don't prevent them from, from coming in. And if a Utopia wanted to come in, it would be a totally different discussion because they would come in and say, hey, we need either X number of subscribers and we need XYZ, and if we have somebody like Connects here, Utopia is probably not going to want to come. But there's some other competitors such like Connects that do it all privately and those kind of things, and you're right, we would let any of those come in. The only thing we would probably dictate is where they go in the public utility easement, so they're all not like cutting up each other's lines.
And the, but the only reason they're here is because I said, let's put it on the agenda, because typically what they should do, any, any public utility, if they come up with whatever juice service, they're going to come and just put in a public utility through, it doesn't come through the council. Like Century Link didn't come through the council. It's if it's a budget impact, so.
Right, in this case, we asked, we, the council, asked for you to report, contact this vendor, find out what they're up to, report back to us. And I think it benefits us if we endorse the idea of fiber.
And that's what we want.
And that's, that's a consensus to anybody, but not for this particular.
And I live in Far West, so Far West, there's a lot of areas of Far West that didn't have any provider. And so they've been working on it for years, and they had considered Utopia and a bunch of stuff, and then the city looked at it and they're like, no, we shouldn't be doing this, and it's going to cost millions of dollars. And so like, they were actively involved in trying to get internet for their residents because there was a lot of places that their only opportunity was not even like Wi-Fi, but like Dish. Cause there was a lot of places that their only opportunity was not even like wifi, but like dish. And so like, it was super crappy. And so Connects came to them and said, hey, you know, like, we'll do this. They just wanted, and so that's kind of where it started. And then as they've gotten newspaper articles, it's just gained traction. But I think we're saying the same thing as you. We don't want to negotiate. We don't want to be involved. All we want to do is allow them to go in the public easement. And if somebody wanted to charge and wanted the city involved, then we'd most definitely would bring it back to you because if it has budget impact, you guys have got to say. Yay or nay. But if we have Connects here, hopefully we don't even go there.
Yeah, it's almost like doing a resolution where they come in and say, we're to support the Boys and Girls Club, but we're not.
Right, exactly.
No, I agree. And, and like, I, it, it didn't necessarily come from that, Alan. I, I went to that page after I heard about the blow up. But I'd already met with the Terrace and South Dog. We've been in discussions about this because at the time we were thinking, we needed the numbers. And especially with our population being so low, I didn't know we could get anybody here. And so we needed to piggyback with the Terrace and/or South Ogden. So we'd all been talking about this for a while before that even came up. And then when that came up, it just spearheaded it.
I was just, I don't want to be strong-armed in, on Facebook for.
And I agree a hundred percent.
I mean, because I want, I mean, I chimed in on Facebook and said, you don't understand, you know, the city doesn't do that. It's just like the. The landslide, you know, that's private property. And everybody's like, you know, why isn't the city up there with shovels and wheelbarrows? And it's like, we don't do that, you know, so.
No, but if we support the idea, that's just what we want. You, you guys are a blessing and we'll, we'll continue just doing what we've done and hopefully we'll have fiber here.
Well, to be honest, so I'm the one that brought it up at the end of the meeting and, and we have been working on it for a couple of months. I've had lots of requests about it. And so I, I wasn't sure if, if all the council members knew about Utopia, understood what it meant. Um, and so it was a discussion I wanted to have. I have, I, I'm not necessarily in favor of Utopia, but I don't know what the council, I don't want to hold stuff back. From the council. I feel like fiber is a beneficial thing to the city. And if the council wants to go that route, then. I mean, there's residents that want it and are willing to take the risk. And so I just felt like, hey, we need to discuss fiber. And I wanted to get it in front of you guys and say, hey, look, this is something that we're hearing about a lot. Let's get a discussion going about it. And in the meantime, he'd already heard from Connects and stuff, so it just kind of came that way. But that's, that's where it kind of came from.
I for one appreciate the update, the information he provided. Now we're educated on the topic. We know how to, how to address citizen concerns, so. I'm glad we talked about it.
I don't, I didn't mean to badmouth Utopia by any means. I, I subscribe to Utopia. Uh, that's just the process that Brigham City used, which I would never recommend the way they did that. That was a nightmare. It's still a nightmare. Um, for them and, and, but the service has been great. I think it's that whole fiber optic thing. That's wonderful. I get my TV and everything through it, so it works out really nice.
Probably the burr under my saddle about this is, I don't want to find about stuff in the meetings. Because then we talk about things and you don't have a chance to, to research it and find out things and talk to people, you know, which I did afterwards. But I would prefer to come into the meeting educated with, you know, when we're talking about things, to be somewhat educated instead of. You know, doing that on, on everything. Cause I, I sent Brayden an email this, this past week and said, you know, we don't have. Um, discretionary business anymore because when we have topics, you know, we should bring them to you, have you bring them to us. So we can research it and then we can all be somewhat educated and bring some information to our meeting as opposed to just getting blindsided sort of. Not, not that we were really blindsided.
No, that was really just more of a comment. We're gonna discuss this in the future.
Marketing one-on-one. I mean, you can do it as a push-through or a pull-through. And hats off to them for getting their word out and getting it as a, as a pull-through. I mean, so what? And it's just like, you know, we're having a discussion. It's gonna happen, you know. One of the nice things about being completely off the grid as far as social media, so I, you know, I, I don't care what anybody says on Facebook. Uh, you know, so, but if, if it raises the level of consciousness, so what? Good, good for them.
There's like four thousand members on that Facebook page.
Over twenty-five years.
You will, if fiber goes through though, you will hear about it, like you guys as the city council. Cause it just went through my neighborhood this summer and like they tear stuff up. Now, Connects has been good at putting stuff back, but you will hear about it because they, and they don't always knock on your door. Cause they went right past my driveway and they didn't knock on my door once. But you will hear about it.
It was my brother-in-law actually, he's in Syracuse and he was like, holy Moses, they, it was crazy, the stuff they were doing.
And there's like piles of dirt on the side of the road and like, yeah, all sorts of stuff. So it will be painful when it comes. If you decide to go with whatever.
Okay, so Mr. Brooks, is there anything we need to do on this item or we just, it was just kind of informational and?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think you could take a consensus. If everybody's good with the idea, let's get fiber in here, then let's move on it. Or at least give them access to our, our right of way. And then at that point, it's gonna be in Sean's, Sean's bag, so.
Except for the complaints you guys will need to handle.
And we will get those, but that's fine. We understand that, so.
Okay, good.
Just a consensus vote maybe on it so we know.
Seeing a lot of thumbs up, everybody. So Counselor Stevens on the fence, yeah? Kind of wishy on that, okay?
If I said no, it wouldn't matter.
Matter. Counselor Hanson, thumbs up, thumbs down, thumbs up, okay? So it's, it's a majority consensus at least.
That's all we needed. Thank you.
All right. The rest of these items are not gonna take that long. Okay, item number two, consideration of ordinance nine forty-six regarding a proposed subdivision amendment. For Riverdale Joanne subdivision located approximately forty-eight sixty-eight south and forty-nine seventy-eight south and fifty west. As requested by the Lodge Properties LLC and AWA Engineering Group, Mr. Eggit.
Thank you. And noted representation for this is AWA Mr. Jake Tate, who's present with us tonight. Uh, the zoning for the properties, retail commercial park overlay zone. It's the old Joanne, it's not, oh, I shouldn't say it that way. The Joanne's building in the vacant parcel on ten fifty west. Uh, the acreage is four point nine nine six acres. Uh, there's no public hearing requirement for this review. This, uh, proposed amended subdivision came before the planning commission on February eighth. During the completion of the review by the planning commission, they approved the small sub, or the amended subdivision and recommended. City council approval with a favorable recommendation for the proposal. Um, there's, there's two minor items that need to be adjusted on the engineering or on the, the applicant plat prior to signature.
So I, I did look at that and it appears that he didn't see.
Can you come on up to the mic, please?
Yeah, Mr. Tate.
My name's Jake Tate, Anderson Wallen Associates, twenty-ten North Redwood Road. Um, and I think he didn't see that there's two blocks. Both of his comments refer to making it for plural people and individuals and adding names. But we had two individual blocks for each signer, so I think we're okay. We'll get with them offline and I think we're probably good to go.
And I can communicate that to him where you can, prior to the final plat being completed.
Excellent.
That, that's pretty much long and short of what I, I have to share.
Okay. Are there any questions, uh, Counselor Arnold?
Move to approve ordinance nine forty-six is stated within the packet with the denims that Mr. Eggit is talking about.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Oh, here we go.
I have, oops.
I have one correction on that, on the, just, I want this included in your motion there. Um, in the third whereas clause, I referred to a public hearing on February eighth before the planning commission. It, it was actually a public meeting, not a public hearing, so we need that amendment made.
So the motion accepts.
Motion accepts that. Um, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this motion? All in favor, say aye. Thank you. Is there any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item number three, consideration of ordinance nine forty-seven regarding a proposed small subdivision for Riverdale Shopko subdivision. Property located approximately forty fifty-four south and forty sixty south. Uh, this is requested by the Chase Brook Company, Mr. Eggit.
Thank you. Other representation tonight is Jay Larson. He's in the back of the room. If you have any questions for him. This is located in a regional commercial C-three zone, uh, on nine point six acres of property. As we know, the old Shopko site. A subdivision where there'll be a front parcel and then a rear parcel. Matter came before the planning commission on February eighth. Again, like the last one, when they reviewed it and, and made an approval and a favorable recommendation for approval by the city council this evening. Um, on this one, there are a few, um, planning comments that are noted, Mr. Larson, and a few engineering comments for the plat. That need to be addressed by your engineering firm prior to submitting a final plat for signature. But with that, both departments are, are comfortable with recommending approval by the council in their review. And, and I, I submit that as, as my recommendation and comments. Thank you.
Any questions for the petitioner or for Mr. Eggit? Counselor Arnold?
Uh, move to approve ordinance nine forty-seven, uh, stated within the packet with the change that. Uh, Mr. Brooks talked about, the public meeting as rather than public here.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously as well. Thank you. Item number four, review and consideration of resolution twenty-two-two dash zero eight, adopting a memorial and community project donation policy. Mr. Brooks and Mr. Douglas.
I really think Sean should do this one. I know it's his favorite.
I really don't think so.
Um, as I mentioned in the work meeting, this is just, it was a request some time ago and it runs along with the. It started off as the recognition to Ryan. Um, but rather than just rename a whole park or a part of a park or something, this was a policy that we came up with that gave him other options that we don't have anything. So it, it is a policy now that we can, we can use for these types of things if people want to donate trees or benches or whatever. Um, I don't know if you have any questions on it. Uh, we stole this from, it's a kind of a combination, I think, between Roy and Park City. If I remember, I looked at theirs, thought they were pretty extensive. Park City was out of control, but they had some good stuff in it, so I still pulled some of that out of it, so. That's where it's at. Um, I did have a couple and we can deal with your questions first and then a couple of just cleaning up.
Other questions? Uh, Counselor Hilton?
So as we, as we apply this to, uh, the folks that were at the public hearing tonight. You would envision that we, how, how does this mechanism facilitate any sort of naming of the field or?
I don't think it does. And that, we purposely did that because those kinds of things are a lot bigger and a lot more involved, which we would want the council to. That's gonna have to be your call, not ours. This gives them other options for smaller things.
So if they did what they're looking for, under this, they would put up a sign. Were we gonna, are we gonna edit what the sign says?
So what, the way I see this benefiting them is, so the field's right there on the east side. This allows for them to purchase a bench with the same memorial on it, put his name on it. They can put it right next to the field. It will still be a memorial to him right in that area. Without bringing in something that takes away and that, I mean, how are you gonna choose which person you pick to own half of the park per se? As a memorial, this way, we can have multiple people in the same park. There's still the name plaque there that will memorialize him in that, in that area. Cause we can work with them to put it somewhere close to that east field. But it puts everybody on a, huh? And we didn't specify a, a bench that it has to be on, so we, we could, we was, our thought was more like the walking trail benches. Because we do them all the time. They're easy to do. Um, and again, if somebody wants to name a park, we're not gonna do that. That's gonna have to come to you guys, but I think it gives them a way to put something in the park. That's a remembrance for him and in the same area. And if that works for you, great. If not.
Yeah, and I, and that, uh, addition we made on that attachment D would pick that up. This is a perfect example of something we could do that we could approve rather than bringing that back into you. So if they wanted to name the bench in the dugout, if we felt that that's something that benefits the city, we could do that without burdening the council or something like that.
And it kind of standardizes. In the past, you know, we did, people have did certain things and there was no standard to it.
I, I got one more little trailing comment, sorry.
Counselor Stevens first, sorry.
You know, there's, I, there's, there's two that I can think of, you know, naming the street, Ernie Schneider. And then the Nancy Bruff, which is down in Kayak Park. And, you know, at, at some point, these become dated. And, uh, the Nancy Bruff one, every year, I guess, either on her birthday or when she passed. There's, it, there's decorations done by her family, which is nice. But it stays there for weeks and months. And it becomes a little bit, you know, it, it's, it's hope, it's like. Okay, there needs to be some sort of, I don't know, where it's, and I, and I get it. Family and so on and so forth, but it, it's like, okay, you know, you take flowers on Memorial Day. Within ten days, the city's cleaned them off the cemetery. Okay, so some, something needs to be there for, in that mode also.
I think that's why we want to standardize it. And back to the street, that is not a ci, that was not done by the city. That's a state road. So that was done through, I don't know how that was done through UDOT, but the naming on that road, that is not a city street that they changed the name on over there. So both South Weaver Drive and ten fifty are both state roads.
Counselor Hilton, do you have something else?
I was just gonna point out that I knew I could get Sean talking. That's all.
You know, I don't try to talk a whole lot.
And we do have something in this ordinance that allows them to, to, to modify or do anything they want to these memorials. I mean, you would have license to just go take those flowers off of, of something like the Nancy Bruff thing.
You know, and that one kind of falls back sometimes on us because it's like, how quick do we do it? We, we don't really run a cemetery, so we're not used to like, oh, Memorial Day, go take flowers off. But the way this is, it's not really gonna be, like that one's more of a headstone type deal, I think. This is more gonna be a bench, you know, and you walk past in the park. If they do a tree, you know. The other problem we had is we had people donate stuff in the past. We went to redo a park and they're like, well, you can't move that because we donated that. And that's memorial to somebody. And it's like, well, we need to do the work in the park. This way, it says in there that you put this in, there's a chance it may be moved if the city needs to move it. And so it gives us a little bit of leeway too, that we're not totally bound. I mean, we would do everything to keep it. But if something happened and you needed to change the park or you wanted to do it, you'd have the opportunity to. It's just nice to have something to fall back on and standardize and we're not treating people different. Is, that's my thought going forward anyway.
No, I, I agree. One thing.
Do you have a question?
When I refer to some of these bigger ones, and Annie alluded to this a couple of weeks, God, I remember what we were talking about now. But there's a state law that says that one council can't bind another council. And in effect, if you did that, if you renamed a park, you know, this might be a big deal to this council that's sitting right here now. But, you know, four councils from now might not like that. And so, not that it's the exact same thing, but it's an example of things. You got, you want to be careful with those bigger items. If we're gonna do that, we've got to go down some serious thinking paths on that. But, but this gives us something, an, another way of going about that to memorialize people without, uh. Binding the city too drastically and it still gives us control over our properties, so that was the idea.
Counselor Arnold?
I, I, my comment was just to echo that. I, I think if we get to the point where we're naming a park or a field or something like that. I mean, it's gonna be an officer or firefighter or something that's been, you know, we, we lost them somehow, you know. Love Ryan, knew Ryan for years, coached his kids, his, you know. I get it. And I've, I've been emailed and emailed back and forth about this whole thing and it's, it's just. That's a big deal, you know, renaming the park, renaming the field, all that kind of stuff. That's, that's huge. That's. I mean, that's gotta be money or sacrifice and not indulging in your passion. You know, I mean, that's like, Sean retires, we're gonna name something after him because he put his whole life into Riverdale and.
Please don't do that. Archery range, I'll take it. The Sean Douglas Memorial Sewer.
Counselor Hilton, did you have something?
No, I'm done.
I did want to thank Sean. I know he's been a little leery of this probably because it does, it, it impacts his department quite a bit. It's something, I work with a lady from Roy. She's been pushing me to do it for a couple of years. She has one in Roy. And, uh, so I, I've been kind of pushing this lately too. I, I think it does benefit. You can see that little guy Bryson. I mean, i- i- if, even if it was something as simple as a tree, you know, which apparently Ryan loved trees, I think. Um, you know, I, I don't think it has to be the field. I think, I think, you know, and I think it'll give a lot of our residents something to. To kind of grasp on, grasp onto and go to. And, uh, Counselor Merrill, did you have something?
Yes, so I actually spoke with Ryan's father, Rudy, and he would love the idea of a tree as well, so.
Yeah.
They, they just wanted to make sure that that was just really important to them too, so.
Yeah, I think it's great. And you guys have done a great job. Thanks for pushing it.
The other, the other thing to remember on these, so these benches are commercial. They're not cheap, so somebody's gonna have to be invested in it. It's not like we're, you know, we're gonna, it's not like a two hundred dollar deal here to go out and do these. So it's gonna take some, like he said, some fundraising and that to go out and do it because they're gonna be fairly expensive upfront to buy. So it should help eliminate a, a ton of wishes, I would hope, but it's, but it's also affordable enough that somebody can do it if they wants to.
Counselor Arnold?
I, I would like, I don't, I don't want it in the dugout. I would, I would like it to be like a bench, like you said, on the walking trail. Something that's out and about from the fence and, and they can see it. But if it's a bench and it's like, you know, it's not like Ryan Jones's bench. It's in memoriam of Ryan Jones.
Typically, they'll just plaque them with a small plaque that's like in memory of, is what we've seen at other cities. Um, and I'm sure Annie's probably seen that down there. They can be problematic. I mean, this is not an easy trip.
And I'm sure Annie's probably seen that down there. They can be problematic. I mean, this is not an easy trail to go down. It can cause issues, but. It it's something that I think we can manage. We will have issues with it, but it's something that there's a, there's going to be requests for it for sure.
Okay, uh, Counselor Merrill.
Oh, I would just like to make a motion to approve resolution number two oh two two dash oh eight, adopting a memorial and community project.
Hey, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Mayor, could I jump in? Sorry, I I hate doing this, but we want to do it right. Um, and this can go into your motion. I just need some clarification things. In the first whereas clause, the very last line, it says beautiful, that needs to be stricken. Just take it out completely. In the third whereas clause, um, it says materialized. Past and the D needs to be stricken. So it's it's current, it's not. So that's the two on that one. The others, and follow me on this one, it's not hard, but so we have the resolution. And then the first page, the resolution refers to an exhibit A, and that is the policy. So you'll see on the first page of the policy, it said. It says exhibit A right at the top of the page. But if you go into the next page, that first paragraph, it talks about some some other attachments. And in some places I use the word attachments and some places I use the words exhibit. We need to, the the motion needs to include that anything from from on page two on. Where it refers to an exhibit, it needs to be an attachment. And then it works. It's all clean. That the first paragraph on that page two is correct. The other ones are not. And so that would also amend the ones later on where it it has the actual exhibit, it needs to be an attachment. So. It would, anything that says exhibit after the first page is attachment and then it's good to go.
So I think this is Counselor Merrill's first motion and you're going to make a repeat.
Completely confusing, but make that motion. How I explained it and when we do the final copy to the merit, we'll include that. So you'll be good to go.
I've got my notes. So motion includes those amendments as stated by Mr. Briggs.
Very good. And the second is okay with that. Very good. Okay, this is a resolution. So. Uh, we will go ahead and, is there any discussion on the resolution? We'll go ahead and poll the council.
Counselor Stevens? Counselor Hanson?
Aye.
Counselor Merrill?
Aye.
Counselor Arnold? Counselor Hilton?
Aye.
All right, very good. That passes unanimously. We'll now move on to item number five, consideration of resolution twenty twenty two dash zero nine, awarding a bid to Great Basin Development and Construction for the Weber Basin Waterline. Uh, and PRV vault in an amount not to exceed four hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and sixty nine dollars and eighty cents. Mr. Douglas.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is a waterline connection. It'll be a, to add redundancy on the Ritter Drive trunk line for Weber Basin. It's more or less a vault that they'll have their meter in and then we'll have a self controlling valve in there that'll be automated that we can control flow in and out. Um, it will provide for additional water on the whole system, but it'll also be redundant so that if their. North line goes out, we'll have a backup on the south line to feed us. Um, and with the future growth, we'll probably need the additional water. So I think it'll be good. It'll also allow us to have all this in before the roundabouts put in. We don't have to tear it back up. If you have any questions, I'll try and answer them if.
Any questions? If not, a motion would be in order, Counselor, oh, Mr.
Did you build in the the ten percent like you've done in the past?
Yes, I did. So the top, the top figure is the actual bid number. The recommended number is with the ten to consent, ten percent contingency.
Counselor Arnold.
Move to approve resolution twenty twenty two dash oh nine, as stated within the packet, not to exceed four hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and sixty nine dollars and eighty cents.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second. Any discussion? Okay, uh, this is a resolution. Will you poll the council?
Counselor Arnold?
Aye.
Counselor Merrill?
Aye.
Counselor Hanson?
Aye.
Counselor Hilton?
Aye.
Counselor Stevens?
Very good. That passes unanimously. We'll now move on to comments. Do we have any comments from the city council? Seeing none, we'll move on to comments from the city staff.
We have nothing further.
Okay, uh, I just have a couple of really quick ones. Well, actually just one. Mr. Brooks, a couple of years ago, you used to do a uh summary of legislative changes with some highlights and stuff. Will you do that for us again?
I will. Um, yeah, I will. But we, I won't, I I attended training in April on that before I get the first batch of those. We'll do a little brief one tonight in our strategic planning of ask Mike to just pull out a couple of them that are hot ticket items. But yeah, the answer to that is question. Or yes, we will, we will do that. It's a lot bigger than what Mike will do.
I was just made aware of two possible changes. One is that all um votes will have to be roll call votes. I heard that already passed. Um, not sure about that, but you can look into that. And uh, with names attached to all votes for city council.
On the actual resolution?
Well, on everything, on on all uh, like. Oh, okay, well, just a heads up on that. Make sure we have that close. And then they also said that they were going to take away. And this is for you to look into, but uh, any fines that are collected in our city by the highway patrol will now go to the state and not to us. That's a, that's a rumor too that I heard.
Right. Mike will touch upon that one tonight.
Um, with that, I don't have anything else.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's interesting though, where you talk about that. A lot of cities actually do on the bottom of the resolutions. They'll have all the counselors' names with a check for yes or no. If you want me to start doing that, I don't mind doing it. It's it. It's good record keeping, if nothing else. Um, we don't currently do it that way, but it would be real easy to do it. And then Michelle can just check those off and that goes into the record that way. But it's up to you guys. We haven't done it traditionally, but we could.
Whatever the law requires is what I'm fine with. Okay, uh, with that, uh, a motion to adjourn to be in order.
So moved.
We have a motion to adjourn a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Okay, we are adjourned. All right, let's take a little break before we head into our next meeting.